Good evening, I'd like to call the annual organizational meeting of the Monroe Woodbury Central School District Order for Tuesday, July 2nd, 2024. Please rise for the question.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to administer the oath of office to Dawn Tauber and Candace. Can you stand up please? Raise your right hand and you have it in front of you. Just read that.
I do solemnly swear.
Together?
Mm-hmm. I do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Board Trustees of the Monroe Woodbury Central School District according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. May I have a motion to adjourn the public meeting into executive session for the purpose of discussing the appointment of particular persons?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
You have to swear her in first.
I do. Welcome. Thank you. All right, welcome back. Hi Caitlin.
Hello. Again, I apologize. I am so sorry.
It's okay. If you want to stand up, just where you can swear you in, your oath is there. Just raise your right hand and go right ahead.
Do you want me to just read it?
Sure.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Board of the Office of the Board of Trustees of the Monroe Woodbury School Central School District according to the best of my ability.
Okay. The floor is now open for nominations for the Office of President of the Board of Education.
I would like to make a nomination. I just have something that I've prepared. I've already shared and discussed the following information with the Board. After careful consideration, I found it necessary to shift my focus at this time based on professional and personal commitments and priorities, so I have made the decision to not seek or serve another term as the BOE president. I am immensely grateful for the support I have received from the BOE. I am immensely grateful for the support I have received from the BOE and community in the President's role over the past two years. I appreciate the various opportunities I've had to contribute to our collective success. I am committed to ensuring a smooth transition during this period with the new Superintendent coming on board, so I am nominating Dawn Tauber as our next BOE President and would look to support her as the Vice President over the next year. Thank you. That's my motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Yeah, you can go here now, thank you. It's been fun, but I'll turn it over to you.
I've got your nameplate.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of President of the Board of Education of the Monroe Woodbury Central School District according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Okay. So, we're just taking a nomination for Vice President?
I nominate Mike Cirello for Vice President.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
I oppose.
Okay, motion carries.
Okay, and then you have the paper there to swear him in.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Vice President of the Board of Education of the Monroe Woodbury Central School District according to the best of my ability.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Now, we're going to do the oath of office for Deputy Superintendent of Schools.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Deputy Superintendent of Schools of the Monroe Woodbury Central School District according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Okay, next up is the appointment of school officials. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Your second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. The oath of office for District Clerk.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of District Clerk of the Monroe Woodbury Central School District according to the best of my ability.
Okay, and now the oath of office for our 2024-2025 Board of Education Student Representative, Dylan Escobar. Stand, raise your right hand. Let me just read that.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Student Representative of the Monroe Woodbury Central School District according to the best of my ability.
Okay, and other appointments? We have the school attorneys, external auditors, central treasurer, and lots of others. Is there a motion?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. It's a lot of hires, Ms. Hawk. Been very busy in the HR. Okay, and the next item is designations of official depositories for funds. Is there a motion? Five eleven, I'm sorry, five eleven. Authorization to appoint Special Education and Partial Hearing Officers. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're approving the resolution of authorization to appoint Special Education and Partial Hearing Officers for the 2024-25. Motion? Yes, we did it?
Yes.
Next up is designations of official depositories for funds. Is there a motion?
Motion. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We have five point thirteen, approval of authorizations. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Five point fourteen, approval of policies.
Motion.
Do you want me to read the action? Motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn, adjourn the annual organizational meeting and convene into regular session?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Regular session, six point one. We just did that, the mission statement. "We are committed to academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment, partnership with families and our community. Our mission is to promote confidence, inspire a passion for learning, and to prepare our students to become responsible global citizens." Approval of the revised agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second? All those in favor? Okay, nine point one, is there an update on questions or comments from interested citizens?
Don't think we have an update.
No? Okay. Other, and there's no questions or comments?
No, we signed up today, no.
Okay, so approval of the Professional Learning Plan for 2024-2025. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
I just, are we going to discuss? I just wanted to know if there are any changes.
I can, I can take that, that's okay. So, by September first of every year, we have to submit our PLP. Just so everyone knows, this ends up being a living, breathing document. It's the main outline of what we're planning for our staff and areas of focus. We get ideas and resources and committee members along the way, based on the needs of our staff. And it's born from what teachers and administrators believe they need in order to be their best selves. So that's the, why this is even created. We have to submit it to the state. The only changes, Stacy, have been some committee members and then some updates as far as particular programs. For example, Into Reading, which is going to be our new reading program, is mentioned in there, and the training that will go along with that as an example.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Motion passed?
We need a second.
Second.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, eleven point one, approval of the Guidance Plan for the 2024-2025 school year. Any questions?
Same, just if there's an update, if Eric can just give us an update on it?
Sure. The Guidance Plan is similar to the Professional Learning Plan where we are required annually to have the Board of Education approve the guidance, as well as to assemble a committee in order to review it. The vast majority is remaining consistent from past years in terms of the guidance counseling model that we have within the school district. There was a few minor language changes in there where we've actually moved away from calling them guidance counselors, they're now really called school counselors, so there was a few references of that in there that we cleaned up. And then also at the end, a chart that is the distribution of all of our social workers, guidance counselors, school psychologists, and there's always ebb and flow each year with regards to the amount of staffing in each of the buildings, so we update that chart annually as well. But no substantive changes.
Any other questions? Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Twelve point one, approval of minutes. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Or second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Personnel.
Thank you, I would like to ask the Board for approval of the items listed under personnel this evening. Included in these items are an MOA for the MWEA bargaining unit. I'd also like to mention a few people who are in our audience this evening. Mr. Julio Cado will be a new high school math and ENL teacher. Welcome. He and his family are also district residents. It's always nice when we have community members coming back to our district. Ms. Kellyanne Coffey will be recommended this evening for Assistant Director of Transportation. She has a long history in the district. Welcome. Mr. Dylan Ferrier is currently a dean at the high school. He will be recommended this evening for a leave replacement position as an assistant principal as the, at the high school.
Are there any questions for Ms. Hawk regarding the MOA? No questions? Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, thirteen point, oh, we did all the personnel. Where does it stop? Where does it stop?
Business and financial?
Fourteen? Okay. Fourteen point?
Fifteen point fourteen point one.
Business and financial for Patrick.
Thank you, I respectfully request approval of the business and financial items fifteen point one through fourteen point seven.
Any questions?
No.
Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Fifteen point one, recommendations of the Committee on Special Education. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Read them all? Okay, and reports by Board and Central Office. So, we're going to start with Taryn.
Have a good night.
I wanted to congratulate everybody on, I guess, organizing the new leadership. Congratulations, Dawn, Mike. Dr. Norman, congratulations and welcome. New Board members, Caitlin and Candace, welcome. And hope everybody has a great summer.
I'd like to welcome Dr. Norman. It's a pleasure to have you here and welcome to Caitlin and Candace. I'd also like to congratulate all our new staff members, our new teachers, and Dylan, congratulations on your new appointment. Everyone have a safe and happy Fourth of July. And good evening.
I agree, of course, welcome to all our new teammates. Dawn, thank you for serving as a President. I appreciate and look forward to your leadership. Mike, same to you as the Vice President. Our new Student Board Representative, we look forward to hearing your voice and your teammates' voice as we go along throughout the year. And then the only final thing, I, some of the community has come to me recently about the prices of photos, especially for seniors. So, I'd like to, for us to dig into that a little bit, to see how we can reduce the cost to our parents of the senior costs, you know, the senior photo, sitting fees, and all of that stuff that goes into that. I had a couple of seniors last year, I know Stacy, we, her and I talked about this a little bit as well. You know, I had two graduating, it was a lot of money for two. We got to figure out a way to do better, and I'm sure there is, so that's all I'll just bring out to the public. Thank you, have a great night. Second.
Thank you, welcome to Dr. Norman. It's great to finally have you here. Congratulations to Caitlin and Candace, the new Board members, and to Dylan, our new Student Board Representative. I want to congratulate all of the graduates that graduated last week. It was a great night until the rain came, so I hope everybody got home safely and have a great night.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name's Dylan. I'm honored to have this position and to be working with you all this year. I think we're going to have an excellent year. I want to thank my parents real quick for always supporting me. My dad's taking the photo right there, so thank you. And yes, it's an honor to give a voice to the students across the district, and it's going to be just a wonderful year with all of you, so thank you.
Just wanted to say thank you for everyone for making me feel so welcome on my first meeting. I'm also delighted to be among such esteemed company. Welcome to Dr. Norman and congratulations on all the new appointments. I'm really looking forward to working with all of you. Thanks.
I too would like to congratulate Dylan and thank you for stepping up into this position. It's a big one, and so far you've nailed it. Welcome to our new Board members. We appreciate, we know that you're volunteer, this is a volunteer position and we appreciate your time very much. Congratulations to our graduates, the Stacy you already mentioned, and of course to our new faculty and staff. It's been, as you can see, a very busy hiring season. We are not done yet, but we are looking forward to having a Monroe Woodbury Job Fair over the summer. There will be some positions that we will still have open, monitors. We will need teacher aides, there are a couple other things, we will need people helping in the cafeteria, so there will be positions that we will have open, and we're looking forward to hosting our own job fair. Time, date, and location to be announced. We want to see what positions we still have open, but that's one of the big ventures that we have this summer.
I'd like to echo what everybody else has said. Welcome, Dr. Norman, welcome, new Board of Education members, and congratulations. Thank you to everybody for approving the Guidance Plan for this year. Congratulations to all the new staff hired. Just a quick shout out to, you know, I think sometimes people think that once graduation happens, you know, there's sort of a reprieve, and summer certainly is not as busy as it is during the school year. However, starting next week, we have hundreds of kids that are going to be returning to the school district in a variety of capacities. And so, thank you to all of the staff that have been involved in getting ready to welcome those kids back and supporting them through the various programs that they might be in over the summer. Certainly, finally, you know, congratulate, congratulations to all the graduates. It's definitely the greatest day of the year of watching the amazing accomplishments of our kids and wishing them good luck. I know it's always a bummer when it has to pivot inside, but similar to what we said earlier, when you walked outside at the end of graduation, the sky's just completely opened up. You know, better to be inside for that than outside. So, with that, I wish everyone a happy holiday. Thanks.
All right, I'm going to echo everything as well, but welcome to our new members. Thank you for serving the community. It's a big deal. Lori mentioned it is volunteer, you don't get paid for it. This is probably the biggest perk, so, which is just being here.
The free water. Enjoy your water.
Endless amount of fat.
Thank you, Patrick, for, for, no, it's all good. Congratulations to our graduates as well. Can't wait to see what they'll do and what they'll, and who they'll become. Congratulations, Dr. Norman, welcome as well. So, thank you, have a good night.
So, I also echo what everyone else has said. Congratulations and welcome to our new Student Representative, our new Board members. I'd also like to thank a couple people who made a donation tonight. So, Ressell Lee for a donation of a cello to the MW Music Department, and the McLaughlin family for a donation of a trombone and trumpet to the music department. We appreciate their generosity and hope everyone has a nice evening. Thank you.
Caitlin?
So first, I want to apologize again for my tardiness. It is the scheduling oversight that will not happen again. I also echo the sentiments of everyone here. I, congratulations to Dylan, congratulations to Candace. I am looking forward to working with each and every one of you, for the community members that are in the audience. I am looking forward to working with the Board to hear your concerns. Dr. Norman, welcome to you as well, so that we can help facilitate making sure that your concerns and what you find valuable in terms of the importance of your children's education, that we work with Dr. Norman to bring that forward to the community. So, I am looking forward to it. Dylan, we will all learn together, but I appreciate the free water and the stationery. Thank you again, and Happy Independence Day, and to anyone who has served, thank you, thank you for your service, especially you, Dr. Norman.
Definitely echo everything that was said. Welcome, Dr. Norman, welcome, new Board members, and have a great night.
That was too fast.
I know, I'm sorry, I'm on Teacher Brain, it's the summer.
That's okay. Welcome, Dr. Norman, we're very glad to have you on board. Dylan, welcome, you know, you and Jacob have been friends for years, so it was great when I saw his name selected. And Caitlin and Candace, very much looking forward to... And Caitlin and Candace, very much looking forward to your joining the board and bringing your perspectives to bear. And with that, I just wanna wish everyone a happy, safe, and fun-filled summer.
Dr. Norman?
So, good evening, first and foremost, congratulations to all the new appointees, certainly you, Dylan, I know that's impressive for students to be in this forum, so, thank you for that, and, and welcome. It has been a tremendous, warm welcome from this community, and for that, I sincerely thank you, on behalf of my wife and I, so, thank you very much. I had the opportunity to visit all the campuses yesterday, so thank you for that, I had a great narrator, and Eric and Matt. I'm very excited to see what we can do, and explore, you know, some of the opportunities that, that came to mind. I had the opportunity to actually meet with several key stakeholders, I enjoyed those conversations, already feel that we've established a rapport, and also conducted my first cabinet meeting today with the cabinet, and I have to say that I beat Elsie's time, I was told that hers is four hours long, so. And so, we were much shorter, and hopefully, we can become more efficient and succinct. I want to say, enjoy your summer, and certainly, take time to reflect on the Fourth of July, that's, that's very important to me, and I want to send that message, and, and thank our servicemen and, and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, welcome to you, we're, we're very excited to have you and to get to work, we'll be meeting with you the next coming weeks to discuss plans and transitions, and how we can support you best. Welcome to Dylan, it's really an honor to have you here, you're outstanding in your application process, and welcome to a great opportunity to help each other here. Our new appointees, Candace and Caitlin, I think that you're gonna see a really interesting part of our, our roles here, as you get to know it a little bit better. And I, on a personal, I just wanna thank my fellow board members for the confidence in, in voting me into this position, I will live up to the role in every way that I can, and do everything that I can to support our students and our community. I've been involved in the district for, for many years, and I think this is just a, a great opportunity for me to give back, and some of the things I've learned along the way, and I think that's it. Welcome to all of our new appointees, you're joining an amazing school district, a community. Dr. Norman said you felt a really warm welcome.
Yeah.
And Lori, did I miss the, the fine print, did we have one of our students get signed with the Toronto Boojies?
Yes, one of our former student athletes, Drew Jemison, signed with the Toronto Boojies.
Wow.
Big deal.
That's pretty exciting, right? Okay, well, happy Fourth of July, everyone be safe, and we will see you in a few weeks, thank you.
Motion.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.